We don't want to cheat them out there, you know.
I don't want to cheat me neither.
That wouldn't be very good.
They paid enough, you know.
Yeah, that wouldn't be good.
We call this board meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on May 14, 2024 at 5:30 PM. Please join us as Tucker Bynak leads us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tucker. All right, I think we have a facility training presentation. Mr. Gilbert?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How is everyone?
Wonderful.
All right, all right. Well, thank you for having us down here today. My name's John Gilbert. I am with the Kentucky Department of Education with the District Facilities Branch. And we're going to go over facility planning today. That's part of the training that we were asked to come down here to do, just the basics of, very basics of where you are and, you know, how to move forward with that in very basic terms. Just as introductions, Matt Ross is not here with us today, but Che Ritter is also here today, our division director out of the Office of Finance and Operations. He's our division director. And then also Greg Dunbar, our branch manager, and then myself. I am one of the project managers at KDE. I work with about 42, 43 school districts. And your all-star reviewer is Gary Leest, who's a peer of mine as well. So he works directly with Nelson County. Our information's up there. If you have any questions, email, all that's in the slide presentation, phone number, and our extensions. So if you have any questions, direct for me, for Che or Greg, feel free to let us know if you don't get a chance to ask them today. So the presentation, you know, I'm going to go through basically the basics of a facility plan. What is a district facility plan? Why do we do them? When do you work on a DFP? Who works on them? And then just some basics on assembling your LPC and assessments. I am going to touch on some of the Nelson County things, but it's not my plan to make. And it's, you know, things that you work with at the local level with your local planning committee and the like as you move forward. Because once every four years, you do these plans. So what is a district facility plan? Well, it's a comprehensive review and evaluation of a school's district's facilities. It's prepared once every four years. It's evaluations undertaken by a local planning committee with the assistance of a lot of outside help from like your architect, your engineers, facilitators, and the like. And, you know, that process is governed by regulation called 702-KAR4180. Now, why do we do these DFPs? Well, a lot of it is legal. But in all honesty, while it is a determinant to give your need or to report your needs calculation as a district, like what do you have as a need to the state? And it helps you qualify for restricted funds through by being listed on that plan. You know, it's also, I guess more importantly, a matter of equity and adequacy for all your students, for all students, all stakeholders involved. You know, what is the most equitable and adequate plan for all in your district and in your community? You know, that's kind of wrapped up in a lot of the language. And of course, I'm not going to get into a lot of the legals. I am not a lawyer myself. I'm an architect. But, you know, a lot of constitutional law and statutory law that provides, you know, our General Assembly is supposed to help to provide an efficient system of common schools throughout the state. And through that, they provide statutory and regulatory things through the process. And, you know, through the Kentucky Education Reform Act and things like that, you know, there was a recognition that, you know, that there is a shared responsibility between local and state governments to create these, you know, systems. And of course, care was a much larger thing. But when it comes to facilities, it's a state and local and working together as a community. So again, that's kind of effectively provide adequate and equitable schools for all. You know, another part of that is to be able to qualify for restricted fund sources. Some of these restricted fund sources are specific just to construction in themselves. And some of them are not allowable or usable unless your work is on that facility plan. And some of those, I'm just touching on here today, and, you know, through a process, you know, the LPC and yourself, who should also go through those orientations when you go through that process, you know, to talk more about capital outlay funds and what they call Facility Support Program and School Facilities Construction Commission. These are restricted fund levels of varying levels. But, you know, if you have work on the plan that you can do, you know, it frees up to be able to utilize that, those fund sources. So, you know, when you get down to the regulatory component of it, there's a regulation called 702-KAR4180. It's just wonderful to call out all these numbers, by the way, when you're talking about regulations and statutes and everything else. It incorporates by reference the Planning Manual, which is on the KD website. Some of you may be very familiar with it, maybe as familiar as anybody with it. But it allows for the guidelines and directions on how to create this process and how to move forward with that process. And gives us basically a framework to how to set things up and how to create your LPCs. So when you work on a DFP, well, one thing that all districts on the KD website, all district facility plans look nearly identical, especially at the header. You know, you have your school district and all the revisions and everything that are on there. What I've got highlighted on the screen right now talks about when your next DFP is due. And for Nelson County, your current plan, which is on the KD website, as all 171 school districts, the current one is past due. It was due June 2023. And now there were, of course, were findings and amendments to that plan. And those are dated accordingly and show on the website as they were published at the time that they were approved. Now, you know, it is past due, and that it is time to, you know, do a new one. So, you know, part of that is assembling, you know, who works on it, you know, who works on that facilities plan process. I mean, really, it's a team effort. And when you look at a facility plan in itself, you can look at the big picture and kind of the local picture of how you're working the plan itself. So at the big picture of things, you know, you have the local at the board, your LPC, your local planning committee, your superintendent, and your community. Because your community is going to be on the local planning committee, those who are selected for those particular roles. You know, as the, you know, deciding body, you also get outside assistance from district personnel, like your transportation people, your DPP, your finance officers, your physical agents, architects and engineers, and facilitators and the like, providing you all information to help better inform you to make a better plan to what your existing conditions are and how they play out. You also get assistance from, you know, us through the Kentucky Board of Education, the Office of Finance. And, you know, looking at the regulations, you know, anytime you have questions throughout the process, we're happy to take those questions as you move through that process. We look at things for compliance. So when they come across our desk, we look at those for compliance and we do provide comments. There is a moment when we see a draft that, and usually there's an extensive list of comments, you know, this does work, this does not work, come up with other alternatives or options. There may be multiple solutions to do this, but the one presented may or may not work. And a variety of things like that. So just to kind of this little triangle here, the main communication lines there is kind of the bold, you know, while we get information from your professionals and the like, we primarily, you know, have that relationship of getting direction from your LPC, you, the board, and the LPC, your superintendent, and the like. So when you're working at the local level, you know, you have also, it's kind of triangular here, if you will, you have you, the board alongside your superintendent, but also your LPC, who is working along, who should be working alongside the board as a group that's representing a cross-section of your community or the county in general. That's 20 stakeholders based on the size of school district you are, representing a variety of school interests. And then all the resources that are provided to you, the ones I've just said, you know, provide that information to the LPC and to yourself through that process to create eventually a draft that we would review prior to, you know, any approvals that I kind of talk about towards the end of this process. So early on, you know, now that you know that your district facility plan is due or overdue, you know, the process starts about assembling an LPC. It's also about doing assessments and the like as you're moving forward with that process. So in talking about assembling an LPC, every time you do a new one, you have a new LPC to go alongside that. So when you look at the numbers that we have in the Planning Manual, which is incorporated by reference, Section 101 kind of gives you this chart. And you all have more than four schools. This is a school district. So I've kind of highlighted the one outstanding there. You know, you would have 20 members, which is our larger school districts. If you have four more, you would have 20 members on this committee. And on this committee, it ranges from your superintendent to your parents, teachers, your building administrators, facility director, central office staff, community leaders, board member. One of your board members, which you would select, would be on that committee. And also your zoning officials and the like. Total's 20. Now, one important thing to kind of know about this cross-section is the number of schools you have. There's one note in there that no school should have no more than one more representation than any other. So if you had 12 schools, if you'll notice the parent, teacher, and building administrator, there's 12 positions. If you have 12 schools, and I don't know how many you all have, I think you have somewhere in the 10 to 13 range, if I'm not mistaken. So you would have one for every school represented. You know, one might have a parent, one might have a teacher, one might have an administrator. And you keep going down that line. In a scenario like this, you wouldn't have one that had three, and then one have zero, or one have one. They would all have one. So it tries to provide some type of parity and tries to be equitable in representation as well. So you have district leaders, community leaders, and school-specific leaders kind of going through that process. At the same time, you know, the board provides the resources for the LPC. And part of that is assessments. Every four years, it is required to assess your schools with design professionals and the like to come up with what are the needs of each school in its existing condition so that you can evaluate that existing condition. Now, you may renovate or do additions. You may do new. There's a whole host of things that you can do. There's a variety of solutions. You need to find the ones that best fit your community and your district. But ultimately, in order to get there, you have to know what you're starting with. What are your existing conditions? How can you best utilize the facilities you currently have based on their age and their conditions and how they qualify for those funds and to make sure that you have the appropriate classrooms for the students served? Generally, and this is a broad brush stroke, is you basically have a classroom for every 25 students. That's generally how you look at it. So when you have a building, do you have a building that has more classrooms than it does students? Or do you have a building that has more students than it does classrooms when you look at those proportions? And you have to ask that. That's what an LPC has to go through. Sometimes it's easier. Sometimes it's a lot harder to do. But through these assessments and the orientations, our next engineers, physical agents, and the like, and facilitators can help through that process. And also, you get orientation information from the Department of Education through this. Because we also receive this information as you're going through that process. So there are two parts of orientation that both your LPC and your board are required to receive and review as part of that process. And the first one is a very general one. It is a video. Actually, it's, and you can find it on our website, or you can find it on a website. And it's, while some of the information, I'm going to admit, is dated and we are behind in getting it updated, we try to provide the information that needs to be updated. And one of those in particular is some of the cost evaluations. Just as a detail, we used to use what's called RS means. Well, they no longer provide that information. So we use the Federal Reserve and Economic Data Information. It's not in the videos of those of that information, but we do provide, you know, some basic information as we submit that information to you recently and in the last couple of years. But part one is generic. It tells you about the process, goes through things in a lot more detail than what I'm going through tonight as a very broad brush stroke as to why you do these things and the best plans moving forward. The thing that really gets down, I think, to the local level is the orientation part two, which is specific comes from someone like myself analyzing and receiving the information from the district that's, that the department has received, some of it as far back as 1990, to assess the information you have and to provide you that information so that you can make local decisions. So, you know, you know, part two, it focuses on things as an overview of your district. How are your buildings looking? We take that assessment from your architects and we look at that. And that information's provided in that. Your current district facility plan and what is on that district facility plan is also part of that presentation. Your LPC's going, your LPC's going to need to know what's on that plan currently. Projects undertaken since your last DFP. Probably one of the more important things I think you have to look at is you have a current DFP and what's on it. And then you have active BG projects in our system that a school board has approved over time. So you have needs that have been identified, projects that have allocated funds to them are basically subtracting from that need. And so what's left is what could go on a new plan. And so it's important for a local planning committee to know all that information as they move forward. So you take those needs, you subtract the needs that are allocated. You might have active projects right now that show that and moving forward to kind of do that. So I don't have your current plan on here tonight. This is, again, a general overview. I'm sure you all are well-versed in that and you have the information yourself. But, but as part of that exercise, you would go into that in greater detail as part of a board and part of a local planning committee as part of that process. So that would be your 2019 DFP, which has, of course, amendments and findings on it. But the other thing, and this is something that I don't know that you have listed, but this is in the Department of Education system. These are all the BG projects that have BG1s that are active that have been received by the Department of Education. So these projects, and in looking at this right here, you have a BG number, a DFP priority. What the DFP priority means is those are DFP priorities that were on a facility plan that the district, after approving a BG1, is saying, we are removing this need because we've allocated it onto this BG1. And they're dedicating funds to that particular project as these nine projects show. So currently, in our system, there are nine projects. I think eight of them are currently active, technically speaking. And when I say active, I mean in our system. I don't know what's happening at the local level, because you all have to make the decisions of how fast or how slow a project moves, you know, as that project moves forward. So there's nine on there. I know, I think recently you all approved the bus garage. That's one of the nine on here. So, you know, for example, a facility plan would have a bus garage on it. It's what we call Priority Four, which is all about your district supports places like a bus garage and central office. Since it is on there, it's removing that need. And now that you've received bids, I presume on that, you've met that goal. It would not be on a future plan. So in a nutshell, that's the revolving door of a facility plan. Identify the need, take the need off by creating BG1s, informing the state. Identify the need, take the need off by creating BG1s, informing the state, doing the work, and when the new one comes up, that work that's allocated or active can't be on your new plan. So, you know, these would have to be closed out and redefined, or scopes have to change if any of this would be on a future plan. So in going through that, you know, once you go through those orientations, once you have your LPC and all those things, you know, there's a process. Of course, there's always a process in government, there always is, always will be. But, you know, you've gone through the process of having an LPC, of having the information, identifying the need, or showing what needs you have, what's been done, providing that information, and even other data is part of that part two, by the way. That is such a broad brush stroke of what I just talked about there. There's a lot of other things that would be beneficial, like enrollment and other, you know, demographics and data that would impact those kind of things that are much detailed that a group would talk about, if you will. Once you gather all that data, once you've gone through all the orientations, then you've got the rest of the process. Now that you're creating a draft DFP, you would go through that approval process. So what does that look like? Well, once your LPC drafts a DFP, it is required that it go through a review at the Department of Education. Before it even goes to the board, it comes to the Department of Education to see a draft, not a final one, but a draft that an LPC has come up with. And we don't, our primary goal in reviewing it is that it is compliant with regulations and compliant with 702K or 4180, which is the planning manual itself that I just previously talked about. So that draft is reviewed, and we would send that back to your LPC with comments. Almost always, there's some kind of comments for a whole variety of things. And again, we look at it for compliance because there's more than one way, there's more than one solution to make a lot of solutions in these events. So like, once we review it, we send it back to your LPC. They will review those comments, and if everything is in agreement, if things are not in agreement, we suggest that you, you know, see guidance, kind of call us to see next steps. There are some steps in the manual about where things aren't in agreement, but when things are in agreement, if the LPC agrees with the comments and makes those tweaks or changes, and everything looks good from our end and from the LPC's end, then it comes to the board. You know, they've reviewed it, you've gotten all the information, and I encourage that as the LPC receives information, your board representative that's on there, and all the information gathered to them should equally be coming to you so that you have that information so you know how they're getting to those answers, you know. They may see data and enrollment and other things that might be insightful to help you understand where though that plan is coming from as it comes to you. So once it comes to you, you would, it's basically a two-part approval, if you will, from a board standpoint. You approve the draft alongside approving a public hearing. So at a public hearing, it's a state public hearing, it's a process of advertising, having the public come up and make comment, and it is recorded, and it is required that a public hearing officer be dedicated to have that public hearing and that information be presented to the board as before they make that final approval. So they would have the ability to review that and receive that information from a hearing officer before they make that final one. And so, you know, you make that second approval, and then it comes to us for final approval. And HB 678, I'm not sure how familiar you are with that, and I'm not going to get the details of it. It is about to expire, but there's been recent legislation that's continuing it. We do everything in our power within 30 business days of getting a complete submittal, give back a response in a more timely fashion than in the past when it was going before the state board, and taking a much longer time just because of process and so forth. So I think that is the gist. In conclusion, and please, after I get through this, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. You know, the LPC DFP is a process requirement, which, you know, it meets basically legal requirements. It allows stakeholders to have representation in the process. You know, there's also, one thing I didn't mention earlier is alongside your LPC meetings, there's also required public forums. There's a minimum of three that are required for public input throughout the process that is required. And, you know, all those meeting minutes are required to come to us to show evidence that those meetings have happened through the process, and recording of the state hearing and all that comes at the end when we get that before final approval's given. You know, the board provides the resources as well, and, you know, you all get two opportunities to review it, you know, once before a hearing and once after. So you get to hear what the public has to say from the hearing in between. And so the capital construction projects are dependent also on a DFP. You know, your access to restricted funds that are specific to construction are, it is very important from that standpoint. But I think moreover, and more importantly, you know, the equity and adequacy of making sure that all your students have the appropriate classrooms and the appropriate, what we call model programs of spaces. You know, you have X number of kids, and do you have the basic requirements of cafeteria, kitchen, gym, all those basic requirements at all those locations in a nice proportionate amount from one to the other? And at this time, your current plan is about a year overdue. There are, you know, you can continue on, but to continue on with the one you have would be a waiver with what you have, which according to my records, we haven't received that yet. So in terms, you can do a waiver for up to four years.
Yeah, that's what I was told, is that if we wanted to just keep it to where it is to let you all know by letter form that we could, now somebody from the State Department told me this, because I made, I knew it was up. So I wanted to make sure we weren't doing anything that we weren't supposed to be doing or anything against the rules. And I was told that all we had to do was notify you all by letter or some kind of official paper that says we want to keep it as is for right now, or just, you know, not necessarily form a new one. Now you tell me what you think.
Well, if you do things like a waiver, you do send us something in writing, but it is a process.
Yes, okay.
And the process is in the manual. It's section five of the manual, it's at the very end, it's the, it's like two or three pages from the end. It's section 501 of the manual itself. There's waivers, findings, amendments, and they're all the same, three same, three things. There is a process, and it is probably a faster process, for lack of a better description, but, well, I shouldn't say faster, but it is a process. Because if you're looking at a waiver, you're looking at the idea of doing a new plan.
Well, I probably said the wrong word there. It was like a continuation of the-
If you want a continuation of your current plan and you're looking at a waiver, a waiver typically is the idea that you're doing a new, or you're considering a new plan. So when you do a waiver, you would convene a new LPC to do a waiver.
Okay.
So when you do a new LPC, they would go through the orientation, you would have to have a unanimous vote from your, from you all and from them to waive for one, two, three, or four years.
Okay.
And so if you could get a unanimous LPC, a brand-new LPC, because of the brand-new potential, I mean, here's the pros and cons of it. If you have a new LPC because you're considering a new one or you're waiving, if it doesn't pass, then that LPC is considering moving forward for a new DFP. Does that make sense? You're not convening to reconvene to reconvene. You're creating a new one for the next four years, and that new LPC decides, are we going to waive this and oversee the, for the next four years, this particular group? Or do we think that we need to do a whole new plan and we're going to vote this down? And then they just start that process of doing a new one. Does that make sense?
But that's our choice.
Well, that's, yes, you all can request and ask a new LPC to consider a waiver, and then they will review the information through the orientation information, and they'll review that, you know, your current plan and not unlike the stuff I showed, plus more data. And if they, through unanimous portion, want to waive that, then they would send it to you all, and you would approve it. Now, the thing is, it does come to the Department of Education, and we would have to review it as well for compliance. So, yes, it's not the full-blown one. I mean, it is one LPC meeting, but it's a very long and important LPC meeting, to be quite honest.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I do want to just clarify what Ms. Berry said. The board can decide to do a waiver, but the LPC, a new LPC, would have to be convened to make that decision-
Correct.
-and make that recommendation to the board.
Correct, yes. So like, you as the board can give the LPC directive, give them a written directive.
We want it waived.
Yes, we would like a consideration of a waiver for one, two, three, or four years. So you, a new LPC is convened, you all pick, I can't remember how many, three or four of those members, each school will pick their member, you know, it's overseen by your administration, you know, teachers and the like, so all 20 people are assembled. Once you have those new members, you know, you can give them a written directive through some official stance on your all's part to send to the LPC. And so in their first meeting, they will review that orientation I briefly talked about. Now, I mean, that's a super shorthand version, because I know you all don't want to stay here all day and talk about all these details, and that are very basic and standard, not into, not for the purpose of today. But your, but you, the board, will get that information, also your LPC. So after they've reviewed that, and after they've gotten the written direction from you all, they can make a vote to consider waiving it to extend for the next one, two, three, or four years. Now, once that, but it has to be unanimous to waive it, that's the thing. Once they waive it, then it comes to you all, and you all. Now, if you all go 5-0 on it, then that's great, you get two unanimous votes, it comes to us, and then we review it for compliance. So you would basically have to get, not only like a new one, you would have to get all three in agreement, basically, to have that final one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Anything else?
I think that explains it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, Superintendent Bradley?
Thank you guys for coming down. Welcome to Bloomfield as we enter into the last week of the school year. We're just going to take a moment to celebrate some of the powerful work happening across the Nelson County schools with our Impossible Top Ten and April Pride Awards. We also have a big week this week with a lot of events going on, including our Pride Award Celebration and Retiree. This month, we are celebrating a few team members from across the district, those including Megan Kurtzinger from the Early Learning Center, Kate Essex from Malca County Home, Megan Hayden from our Mental Health Services Team, Jessica Votaw from Nelson County High School, and Morgan Algar from Foster Heights School. These are all five Pride Award winners. They make up the 40 Pride Award winners from this school year. We also have our May Impossible Top Ten with a number of pieces and parts. This is in no way inclusive of all the remarkable work occurring in our schools, but just some of the pieces and parts, we'll start with number 10. This was reported yesterday, and maybe my favorite. Kindergartner Calvin Stone shared at the Coxus Creek Cree-Sike Picnic that there are really two creeks. We are the creek, and there is an actual Coxus Creek. And their story is the creek never stops at Coxus Creek. New Haven Kindergarten, so it's 100% of kindergarten students at New Haven are on grade level in reading, and 97% are on grade level for math. 11 Nelson County students graduated from Elizabeth Town Community and Technical College with an associate's degree or will be or planning to in the weeks ahead. The bus garage groundbreaking will be on May 29th, and it will be a big moment for our transportation team. The Upcenter groundbreaking will be this Friday, May 17th, with a big celebration with partners from across the district. Boston Middle School, nearly 70% of eighth-grade students were proficient or distinguished in reading during the last quarter I-Ready test. 271 checks were issued by Advanced Kentucky to Nelson County student, eighth-grade students for their performance on the PSAT totaling $13,550. Foster Heights students are projected to show 22% growth this year in Kentucky State Assessments, according to the spring assessments on I-Ready. And lastly, we have the youth apprentice selection, five new youth apprentices, teacher apprentices were selected. Congratulations to Sarah Riley, Michaela Burris, Ava Thomas, Elisa Owens, and Ashlyn Cecil, five community members that are in our schools that will be taking on the early educator pathway in the next few years. And finally, as we started with, the Nelson County Schools will celebrate over 40 Pride Award winners and 15 soon-to-be retirees this Thursday at Day at Crossing. There is our Impossible Top Ten. Again, only scratching the surface, and many of our schools are doing so many amazing things this week across our district.
I think that deserves applause. That's amazing stuff. Good stuff. Okay, we have Mr. Patterson and Ms. Arnold presenting BMS Data Dashboard in College and Career something connects.
This is, yeah, this is really two parts. Each month, we want to hear from the school principal of the school where you are participating, and just hear a little bit about the work going on there in terms of priorities and some of their focus points. And Mr. Patterson, thank you for being here tonight, thank you for setting up the space, and welcoming Katie and the board.
All right, thank you again, Nick Patterson. I've had the privilege to serve the student staff and community of Bloomfield for the past three years as the principal. Wanted, as Mr. Bradley said, a lot of amazing things going on around the district, a lot of amazing things going on here at Bloomfield. Wanted just to touch on a few of those, give you a little overview of some of the things that we are doing here. There's been a longstanding phrase of blazing a trail of excellence that's kind of been long before I came here, and something that, as we talk about a vision for our school and what our community wants, has been something that we've always held on to. So we want to continue to blaze a trail of excellence around this building. Over the past couple of years, we've also looked at a school vision here you see as Building, Molding, and Serving with the acronym of BMS. Really looking to build impactful learning experiences. We want to make sure that everything we do here, that we are growing our students as communicators and as critical thinkers. And there's lots of ways that we're doing that throughout the classroom. There's a couple of ways that you see here through I-Ready, ThinkCirca, community assessments. Of those 231 checks that are written to Nelson County Schools, 82 of those are to Bloomfield Middle School students totaling over $4,000 that we will present to our eighth graders at their promotion ceremonies in the next couple of weeks. So really proud of the work that they're doing. We've been doing a lot of achievement coaching. We're seeing a lot of growth, which is something you'll see on the walls out here as you leave on both sides. A lot of areas for just academic growth and academic achievement. We're just doing, really focusing on celebrating those. We're finding that there's nothing better than seeing some of those kids walk out of a classroom, especially kids you don't expect it from, be like, I grew 27 points, and just getting excited about growing academically, which is just exciting to see each and every day that we're here. Molding, just also knowing that all of these students are going to become a community member somewhere and want to help them to understand that even small actions that they take can create big change in some of those things. Hopefully, we talk about each money like each day, like hopefully those are positive things that they're doing. A lot of that revolves around just the culture of our building and what we're doing through our culture, through our house systems, and through the different adults in the building. And lastly, serving. We know that being someone that is a servant will really take them a long way, so just having a village-over-self mindset. So we do a lot to make sure that there are opportunities for our students throughout the year where they can serve, and they can serve others. As you see, maybe, let's see what happens here. There we go. As you see, here's a couple of the points that we've been tracking over these couple of years. 70% of our students showed academic growth in reading or math from winter of '24 to spring of '24, 70% of our students. So about 210 of 300 students showed that academic growth and progress in some form or fashion over the past several months. 93% of our students say they have a person in this building that they would say, hey, if I needed someone to talk to, I could go to that person. We'd love for that to be 100, and we're working on that each and every day because getting that number up even higher is really important to get up to that 100%. And then 100% of our students, as we said, have had that opportunity to serve. A couple of these are areas that are a little bit, just some of the data behind that. Look at a lot of this data on that PSAT, which was the going through Access, Advanced Kentucky Access to Algebra and English pilot that we're teaming with them throughout the district. We administer the PSAT 8-9 the past couple of years, and in seventh and eighth grade, 53% of our students, around 52, 53%, have met or exceeded the benchmark in reading and writing, which is just showing that growth. Again, not being stagnant, but showing they're making steps towards their education and towards just really taking ownership of that, which is one of the things we focus on, owning their education and being proud of the work that they are doing. We also have obviously been involved in the community assessments, which we have been looking to see, are we independent, are we empowered- have been looking to see, are we independent, are empowered learners in that, and see some of the examples from science, history, and just showing growth. Again, there's got to be a start, we, a place where we start, whereas we may look at this and see 36% independent or empowered, uh, that, that's a starting point for us this year with our Community Assessments, and we're going to be continuing to look at that to see that, that is a, a number that's growing. Um, maybe not necessarily where we want it to be right now, but it's definitely one that we want to make sure that it's growing. Down on the bottom left-hand side here, um, the numbers are kind of small, the blue, the blues are the, um, KSA results from last year. Um, we have reading on the left, and math's the one that's on the middle, um, and the red is where we are projected to be based off of, based of Eye Ready testing, which is a, which is a, a little predictor for how our students will do, and you'll see, uh, as you see there, we have between about 10, five to 10 points of growth in most every area, in every single grade level, um, as that red is increasing, which is what we want to see, we're making that growth, we're celebrating that. Uh, through achievement coaching, students are seeing, "Hey, this is something that, that people recognize and that people care about," and that's one of the parts where we have those, 93% of those students are showing, "Hey, so, and I've got people I can talk to in the building," and we're just, we're celebrate, we're celebrating those, and really, uh, just building those personal relationships. We know that for them to grow academically, that, that growth, those relationships are vital, and they are key, uh, in order for us to really, to dig in and to really, uh, do some of the tough work with them on a, on a daily basis. So those are some of the, again, that is a, a very brief snapshot, I mean, there is a whole lot of things going on within these walls beyond just some, some scores or a couple of these data points. We've got an amazing FFA that's over there right now celebrating, uh, a large group of FFA students who, who have placed in, in different categories across the state for the work that they're doing in FFA, we've got that in STLP, we've got that in band, yeah, not, it's not just the world of, of English, math, language arts, and stuff, social studies, there are a lot of other exciting things going on as we're preparing them, uh, for their future, uh, the years they're here at Bloomfield and then beyond at the high schools. Alaska, Laura, come on, Laura's going to share, um, share some of the information about our, um, the Classroom Connects as well.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. So tonight, we wanted to take a few minutes to share with you all about some of the progress that has happened, to think about, uh, our focus around middle school programming, and for the past couple of years, we've had a lot of conversation around opportunity and access for our middle schools. So when the decision was made to move Boston and New Haven students to OKH, it really allowed us as a leadership team and with our schools to be reminded of, what are the priorities we want to focus on as we think about providing the right opportunities? So I want to remind you of our priorities as we started thinking about middle school opportunity and access, and it was around shared ownership and ownership, how do we create a sense of ownership across all of our middle schools, focused on cultural and academic success, and I think that was very evident as you heard Mr. Patterson share about things happening here at BMS, and then creating long-term innovation and equity. So how do we think about creating innovative experiences that connect our students to the real world and opportunities that could support them in their development in the future? So, yes.
You have, I was going to.
I was getting ready to nod to you. So as we thought about opportunity and access within our middle schools, we, uh, started conversation with all of our career and technical education leaders across the district, and I have to celebrate our career and technical education teachers over the past three months. These individuals in grades six through 12 have come together to think about programming in our middle schools, and to also think about how that leads into high school opportunities to really create seamless paths, and really the idea that career exploration, middle grades, that is a critical time for that to happen. And that's not Laura Arnold speaking, that's research and data that shows that. So I've actually shared with you all in this presentation a link to, uh, research from the Student Assistance, uh, Program, where it talks about the importance of career exploration, and actually acknowledging that our middle school students are hungry for this, and they're eager for it, and it actually supports their academic performance along their journey. So I have a data point from this article that says two-thirds of current high schoolers that were, uh, surveyed through this research project, and graduates say they would have benefited from more career exploration in middle and high school. So as a result of that, that really got us to dive deeper into what is actually happening locally in our middle schools, and what opportunities do we need to continue to advance and explore? So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Patterson to talk a little bit about, what are some of those middle school exploratory career awareness, uh, experiences that are currently happening at BMS?
As you can see on the screen, these are some that we, uh, right now, we have, within the world of agriculture, we have lots of different realms of that, whether it be companion animals, Kentucky agriculture, there's lots of different realms beyond that. Uh, we have, we have art, we have music, it's not just, uh, a band, it is a, a music, um, appreciation, we put, we ask our sixth graders to, we ask them, it's kind of like those voluntold kind of things, to go through a sixth grade academy where they get a little bit of a taste of all of these, so they, they taking agriculture class, they take a, a music and an art class, they take a business class, um, they take a life skills class, just so that they can, again, get a little taste of what those look like. We've had lots of students who come out of that, they kind of go into it a little bit like, "I'm not sure I really want to take that class," and they come out of those classes, um, really seeking more, seeking more of that, that kind of class, like, maybe it's an agriculture class that they just really didn't understand about agriculture, but once they take that class, wanting to, uh, take more. We, we feel important, some of those being life skills, some technology classes, just to teach them a, uh, basic technology, and, uh, I think, uh, some of our teachers call it like Google or email etiquette, so that the whole email message is not just all in the subject line in bold capital letters. Um, typing, personal finance, health, PE, those are some of the offerings that we have right now, and we've been in conversation with our staff too, around what are some oppor-, other opportunities we can offer here within our building moving forward, so we can continue to grow and continue to provide some more of those opportunities, but also know that there's some, um, more opportunities that, that are available too, within, within the district, um, through these, um, these Connect offerings.
So as we visit with our students and families as they enter high school, one of the things that we're seeing in some of our comments are, our students really don't have the knowledge or the experience to even think about what pathways they want to enter into high school. So as we started thinking about, okay, here are the local offerings, and where do we need to really go as we think about increasing opportunity at OKH, because we knew we were getting additional students there, so that meant additional elective opportunities, and as we started entering into that conversation, we wanted to hold true that whatever was offered at OKH, that Bloomfield Middle School students receive that same access. So we wanted to ensure access across the district regardless of what school you're attending. So that led to the exploration of our middle school, college, and career connects, and really focusing on some key principles, we're calling them our UP Principles, United People, Place, Purpose, that this would be tied around creating networks, professional networks of teachers working together to create academic and career rigor and experiences across their schools, staying connected to our house communities as we think about our Care and Connect structures and different things happening locally, and then College and Career Connects, how are we putting a true focus around career exploration, because the data is very evident that it is needed? So district-wide, that led us to really thinking about middle schools' pathways of purpose. So we currently have agriculture programs at both middle schools, but what we were seeing is, there were very different things happening at those locations. Then our students wanted to enter high school and be prepared to go into those Principles of Agriculture, and we weren't seeing good alignment within those programming. So we pulled our middle school and high school ag teachers together to think about, what do these experiences need to look like, and if a kid's getting a high school credit at OKH for Principles of Ag, Bloomfield Middle students should also have that same opportunity. We also spent time talking around aerospace, so I know, Mr. Norman, you attended our Level Up Celebration yesterday and got to see firsthand some of the great things happening in aerospace. I think the young lady that spoke about, she had completed the Aerospace Collab, had participated in dual credit at ECU around aviation, had built an airplane this year, and then was going to be flying next year, that speaks for itself, the power of those experiences. So, Mr. Sergeant Fost had some time in his day to think about, how can we introduce STEM-related experiences from the lens of aerospace? So we'll have an opportunity in the afternoon for our middle school students to go to Samuel Field Airport, and I can promise you, that is happening in very few places in the state of Kentucky. So what an amazing opportunity, and I have to say this, I know, Mr. Bradley, I'm talking a lot, but Bill Hammond, the Build Instructor, was recognized on Saturday by the FAA, and he received national recognition as a mechanic and as a pilot. And I left there with chills to think, our students are having the opportunity to be connected to an industry professional that very few people have access to, and to think that middle school students can now start being connected to those people and places is unbelievable. We also are going to be introducing our College and Career Academy, Ignite. This year, we had 11 students graduate with associate's degree, we know we can triple and quadruple that if we have the right structures and supports to create that. So in order to create a pipeline for that, we want to offer Algebra I and Advanced English classes in our local high schools, to introduce students that choose to do this to accelerated coursework that will set them up to start working on their associate's degree while in high school. Also, through the pre-Ignite, we will be creating tri-weekly connects with those kids to ensure they're getting the support through that accelerated work. We're also looking to expand business programming, uh, we have several requests around entrepreneurship, financial literacy, so that'll be happening in our business programs. And then Air Force JROTC, eighth graders will now have access to Air Force JROTC offered at Nelson County High School. So what are our parents and students telling us about these opportunities? So I do not have Old Kentucky Homes request in front of me, but I met with Tara Steele today, and it's insane how many students and families are wanting these opportunities. What I wanted to bring you tonight is specifically, what does that look like at Bloomfield Middle School? So, Mr. Patterson, uh, for eighth grade, that's what I want to focus a lot on, um, I think we had around 80 registration cards returned, and out of that number of registration cards, 90% of our students identified aerospace, the Ignite Program, JROTC, Ag Collab, and Engineering Collab as a number one choice. So that's out of about 70, 80 forms returned, 90% have that as a number one choice. So I think some of that data speaks for itself about students and families being interested in these opportunities. So I'll open the door now for questions, comments around our College and Career Connects.
Go back to the other page. Okay, so my question is, your timeframes, so is that, so will we have a teacher come here to teach these children?
Um, no, so thinking about the power of people, place, and purpose, many of these are focused around the place of learning. So I can't talk about aerospace as well at Bloomfield Middle School as I can go into the airport and sitting in an airplane, go into the airport and seeing the airplane built. So aerospace will be happening at the airport, obviously, yes ma'am?
So it, more or less, the children are going to be out of school, away from court places?
Yeah, so, yeah, for 20 minutes there, about 20 minutes back, um, you know, if you think about career and technical education throughout our state, much of career and technical education is a regionalized approach, just like our area Technology Center sitting on our Nelson County campus, we have students from LaRue travel there, we have students from Bardstown travel there, so it's very common across the state.
But that's for high schoolers, not middle schoolers?
Are we talking, this is every day?
Yes, ma'am.
So the current.
That's not, that's not feasible every day.
So, uh, again, I just want to come back to where we started this conversation, so.
And if you're going 15 minutes, you fly.
Aeros, I didn't, I didn't say 15 minutes, I said 20.
I just want to bring the board back and the conversation back to how we got here. So in January, you said, you said this, in January, um, obviously, we've been talking about middle school access and opportunity for three years, but in January, the board made a decision to advance access and opportunity for students in middle schools in transitioning, uh, students to Ockdick Home from Boston, New Haven. With that, that was driven by work, uh, to advance academic and cultural success, but also, uh, create long-term innovation and equity. I, I want to be clear in saying that Ms. Arnold, the principal team, and others that have worked up to this point, including the program leaders in aerospace, in engineering, in, uh, agriculture, et cetera, those program leaders are working from the assumptions that, long-term, school is going to allow students and families choices to participate in programs, uh, like these. We know that the future of school is going to be much more agile and flexible, we know that right now, there's a school choice amendment on the ballot in November, I think everyone assumes that's going to pass. And that school choices amendment is really about these types of conversations, it's about advancing equity and opportunity. I think the, in, in the next five to 10 years, education, we expect to be much more fluid, especially as kids get into middle and high schools, we already see that in Nelson County. Uh, and as you know, we've pioneered some of that work. I share that, just to say, it's important that, you know, how we got here. So, um, these opportunities for students do, do allow eighth grade students to take time, in this case, 12 students have chosen, whether they all get accepted, I don't know how that works, 12 students have chosen to apply to be a part of the Ascend Aerospace Program in the afternoon, that would include their transportation to the Ascend Aerospace Program. That, in this particular case, is those students and families' first choice. Um, additionally, in the same way, we've had 19 students sign up for advanced early college classes. The only way we can offer those advanced early college classes is through these early college Ignite programs, we're not able to have those all places at all times due to the human resource reality. In the same way, we have the same programs at ROTC, which for the first time ever, will ex, will open up to eighth graders, we're really excited about that, we know we want to continue to grow that program. Uh, and lastly, we had 31 students sign up for either engineering or agriculture, in the same way, those are two-hour programs, those programs are working from the assumption that families and students should have choices as they grow and grow of age, and how they explore opportunities. So I share that, just as, again, this is, I just want to clear the, clarify the assumption, so, and a lot of people put a lot of work s, over the last four months into kind of getting to this point.
And clarity around agriculture, there will still be a local agriculture teacher here on site, and she'll be offering courses for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. These are parents and families that have chosen this, is their number one request.
But were they, was it explained to them when they chose these, I was here, so I mean...
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Patterson reference that.
I mean, I was here, and there was nothing that, nothing that physically said, basically, your middle school child is, is going to be bused wherever, and they're going to be missing from the school for two to three hours possibly.
We would, we would consider this school as well, just to be clear, but it's just not in this current location.
Could I, could I ask a question about the algebra and the English? So Algebra I, is there, so there's not going to be Algebra I taught in this school? If they want Algebra I, they would need to go to a high school to take it, is that correct?
I think, right now, when we look at those numbers, because this would be, um, a Algebra I and the Advanced English credit, I think one of the things that we have to, we're of is also that there may be some students who maybe, they need, want the Algebra I class, but not the English. So when we see those numbers, I think that will determine whether or not that Algebra I class can be, a lot of it's a numbers game too for us, when we sit and look at classrooms and how many.
So is this also, like, for Old Kentucky Home, if they want Algebra I, will they need to go to a high school to get it?
Uh, no, we actually met on that today, it looks like, and again, it's based on request and some of that, but I think we're looking at, what would it look like for an Algebra I to possibly happen at OKH, and then there being access at the county? I can't give you a definite answer to that, because... I can't give you a definite answer to that because registration numbers are going in and the master schedule design, but that has definitely been a topic of discussion.
I mean, and I just say that because, and I talked to some parents who were presented this information and, and the ones that I talked to, and I, it doesn't represent everybody, but the few that I talked to, they didn't feel like they had a choice because of course they wanted their child to take Algebra I, I would too, and Advanced English, I would too. And if that is only offered offsite, my issue is just from a logistical standpoint, it's a lot easier to move a teacher here to teach that, maybe for a period, for however many, it looks like there would be few enough right there that it wouldn't be more than one class, than to move 19 students back and forth, like logistically.
So, you know, I think it's to the rigor and relevance that you want the experience. Because I go back to aerospace, we probably couldn't have Sergeant Fost here and at BMS at the same time, obviously, but this experience is going to be much more relevant and rigorous if onsite at the airport.
For Algebra, for Algebra I though, I'm asking about this Algebra I and Advanced English, could a teacher, I mean, it just seems so much easier for a teacher to be moved rather than all these 19 bodies of students, you know? Logistically, I think Algebra I, I don't even think, y'all are calling it early college, I just think it's, it's a basic that ought to be provided in the eighth grade. But I know that there's a challenge around finding teachers to teach math, that's a struggle.
So we talked a little bit about your concerns, Ms. Milburn, last week. And largely, the concerns you shared with me were around just ensuring the academic foundations were a part of this experience. What other concerns might you got, once you have in relationship to these opportunities? Because I think we, we recognize your, your concerns. We also are working from the belief that long-term innovation and equity are going to create a more agile, thoughtful system. And that in order for students in all places to really have more choices, the system will continue to be more and more fluid.
Well, I have some, okay, here's my issue. I think it's, I like that there's the opportunity to expose these children to career pathways. I mean, it's hard to argue that it's not good to expose them. And then when they come to high school, they can hone in on their focus. My issue is with the transporting of the children every day. We have children that are going to be riding a bus to school, and then in the middle of the day, they're going to take a bus across the county, and then in the afternoon, they're going to take a bus home. And it, it just seems like we could be creative enough to come up with a way to give them opportunity. Maybe even, as I was speaking with Mr. Bradley, maybe even it would be a more innovative thing if they have a bigger block of time and not do this every day. Because this is lost instruction time. The children that are choosing this are choosing, you know, that they would lose an elective. They would go from six course offerings to five. They're losing an elective because of the time on the road. So I just would ask if you could look into, you know, maybe offering this once a week, you know, for a longer period of time, less instruction lost, you can, maybe more bang for your buck in the time that they're spent there. I just think it's a lot of logistical transporting of children, I do.
So I'll address that a little bit because in '22, when the district facility plan was being formed, these are the logistic things that we discussed. We want to offer, or at least I think the majority of the staff and the majority of people in the district, want to offer these options to families and to students. And the logistics were worked out. Of course, you know, having middle school students spread out to the east and west of our county is a, it's a logistic issue. But are we going to deny the fact that we removed the one option that would have allowed these students to be right near these facilities and we wouldn't be having a logistic concern? Those kids would be right there. The second thing that I think is really interesting is, we're okay, and I guess this is a question to the board, are we okay to offer these opportunities to a portion of our middle school students and now once again, put a group of students at a disadvantage of not having these options introduced to them? And I'll even mention one more thing, and I understand what you're saying, can we not move a teacher? If we have 19 kids here and 19 kids at OKH that want to take the Algebra I and the Advanced English, well, that doesn't really justify having two teachers in two different locations, or maybe we only have five at OKH that want to take that. So those kids won't have the advantage of it, or maybe we only have five here. That's the logistics that we've tried to work out when we looked at a district facility plan that would create equity across the board and logistics be not a concern. Because I don't think anyone's denying, we don't want our kids on buses all day long. No one's denying that. That's again, why District Facility Plan was about uniting students in the locations where we had the resources.
Well, and I agree with you. If, if you just have 19 students, you know, let's, let's move the teacher. There's got to be a way to do that. Let's let the teacher come, and, and maybe it would be a couple of days a week. I think, I think you guys are very intelligent and capable of working out the logistics that would allow it at both campuses, Algebra I, Advanced English.
So am I hearing that your only concern is the Ignite at the two high schools? Is that what I hear you saying?
My, no, no, no. My, my concern, I believe that this is a really complicated way to accomplish something that could be accomplished simpler. I believe that, I was excited and I am excited about Old Kentucky Home because we finally have enough students there, we have a good cohort group, and that's going to make staffing, it opens up the possibilities for staffing. I'm excited about that because we can offer these things that we weren't able to offer before. So I believe that we can figure out a way to have an Algebra I teacher onsite at Old Kentucky Home. And I believe we can figure out a way for that teacher to come to Bloomfield. It just, I, I do not believe that our only option is to put these children on the bus in inclement weather. I mean, we're going to be dealing with lots of weather situations.
So I guess I'm trying to get clarity on, is it just the Algebra I?
No, no, no. That's just the easiest fix. To me, that one's the easiest fix, okay? Out of those, that one seems like, I don't even know why that's an option.
You can get, you can take kids from Old Kentucky Home, put them over to Nelson County for algebra and bring a teacher over here. This is just, to me, there's just way too much space. We have students now that sit in the auditorium and wait 15 and 20 minutes for the next class. I highly just, I don't like getting on the bus, these kids getting on a bus, going every day and losing class time. We've got low enough, we've got, we've got to struggle enough to get these kids up to par and, and being successful as it is. You start in middle school and you're asking for a lot, and I'm, that's, I'm good, that's good. I don't, that's it. But all this kind of stuff every day, to me, is just not feasible for middle school. High school is one thing, but when you, wait a minute, when you take those kids, let's say Aaronoff, and you go out to the airport, that's one thing. But when you're just talking about discussing classes like algebra and advanced math and that, that's a totally different thing to me. The, the airport's one thing. It's a wonderful program and, and those kids that want it, they deserve it, that's fine. But no, not when it comes to classroom stuff, no. They don't need to be transported.
Classroom stuff.
I'm talking, you know what I'm talking about. I'm talking about algebra and advanced math and that kind of stuff. They don't need to be, they don't need to be getting on a bus and going somewhere when you can get somebody to come here.
I guess I'm just a little confused because the last board meeting, we put local dollars toward a renovation of an UP Center, is that correct? I don't know, we had the 10 million grant and then we had these additional local bondi potential. And we're saying we believe in this, in the future of this, but yet we're questioning the exploration of these experiences at the middle grades?
I'm questioning the legit, I'm just questioning this logistical proposal, Ms. Arnold. For, for, well, for Okentucky Home too, because I think you're also talking about moving those children too. I think there could be really great exposure, and I think that in and of themselves, these, these present opportunities for kids to explore. But every day putting them on a bus, there has to be a way to do it, whether you do a quarterly chunk of time or once a week, longer period of time, there just seems like there could be a way to do this that doesn't involve daily interruption of instructional time.
And as far as finance goes, whoever is driving the bus, the bus, the fuel for the bus, that, those funds alone, could that not provide a teacher position?
We got buses all over the place.
Just to, just to clarify.
We get reimbursed.
Just to clarify.
Buses zooming all over.
We get reimbursed for that.
And this is partly due to the state's priority of career and technical education programs. We get reimbursed for all transportation and really doesn't cost us a dollar to do this work. I do have a question though, we have 80 students-ish that filled out a request. I know you guys have heard from a few parents. Mr. Patterson, what have you heard from parents, what has site base heard from parents about these opportunities here?
I mean, when I, I mean, it's been a handful. I mean, just the transportation has been a, you know, a question of like, how do we overcome that obstacle of transportation? I think the two things, the two main things I've heard, just again, from a small handful, have been, have been those two things. Can there be, some of you over here and what about that transportation piece? But it's.
Of the 80, I mean, 80 students, families in general, would you say, is it a positive response or is it?
No, that's not a fair question to ask him. He just told you, he just told you what, and don't look surprised.
So what I said was, a small handful, I mean, we're talking probably two or three from each one of them. So I mean, the other, I mean, there's a lot that I haven't heard positive or negative from. And then there's been, there's been a hand, there's been a good handful of people that have, are positive about it. So I mean, it's, yeah.
You know, another, another issue that I think is worth thinking about is we're getting ready to do this big renovation at the Area Technology Center, and these classes, they are going to be relocated for about a year and a half. And I know that the welding is going to potentially go into county ag. I mean, like, we're going to be moving around students anyway, just by necessity of the big renovation that we're doing there. So I mean, my concern also would be, you know, now you're going to bring in more students, you know, for these, I, I just, there's got to be a better way.
I love the idea, I love the idea of getting these middle schoolers the opportunities, but allowing the middle schoolers to have these opportunities, that take away some of the opportunities for the high schoolers? Or is it going to be more accessible to the high schoolers? Can you speak on it a little bit?
It'll be more.
Yeah, that's actually a great question when you think about opportunity and access at the high school level. So my answer to that would be no, because we have access. So for example, JROTC, one of the reasons they wanted to offer to eighth grade students was their high school enrollment was low, just to be transparent. So it really opened a door for students and families to learn about the possibilities and see what's there. When we brought Sergeant Fost on at the airport, when you hear the vision of the local airport board, they were very focused around creating a STEM experience and it not just being tied to high school. So we've intentionally tried to protect some time in his day to provide middle school opportunities, because that was a priority of our community partners in thinking about that experience. And with the Ag Collab, Mr. Goodlett from OKH will actually be supporting some of that experience for his eighth graders as a part of that collab experience. And their local SBDM actually decided to add an additional ag teacher at OKH because that's been such a huge request there. So I would not see where this would have a negative impact on high school programming.
Okay, that's, that's good. I'm glad to hear that. I don't want any high school opportunities taken away, so.
We can all establish, we want more opportunities for kids, we can all agree to that. We can all establish, we want more middle school career exploration, I think everybody agrees to that. We want to, we can all agree that we want advanced courses and potentially kids gaining access to early college classes. It sounds like the challenge is really around logistics. So I think it warrants further discussions and conversations around logistics. I think that seems to be the primary conversation in addition to, Ms. Milburn, we talked about academic foundations in these courses and ensuring the strong rigor and presence of those. That seems to be generally the issue. So is there an ask of the board, knowing that this wasn't necessarily a decision item tonight, we were just sharing this as a part of the ongoing process? Is there an ask on the board or something that you guys want us to do over the coming weeks as we come into the end of the year and into June that's important?
Yeah, and I think we also need to keep in mind, like, our middle schools are starting to design master schedules, our high schools are. So I think the direction that we're given, I think it's just need to be conscientious of, a lot of scheduling activity is starting to happen now.
I will also say that a big selling point of me trying to get some of the Boston families to move their student to OKH was these programs. And I don't know if the board realizes, you know, Boston, at least 10 families have removed their kids from our, from our district because of this transition. And there would have been more, but a big selling point was having these additional programs. And I can't imagine what those numbers will look like if we start removing these, this access, the things that people really are looking at as different and unique to middle school.
But nobody's talking about removing them, we're just talking about refining them. Nobody's talking about removing algebra and that kind of stuff.
I'm not talking about.
We're just talking about the logistics part of it.
My ask would be, if you could look into the algebra and the English, it seems like those are things that parents were interested in. I understand there may be more at Okentucky Home than Bloomfield, just because of the numbers. If you could look into the possibility of a teacher coming here.
So again, that's where I go back, really are issues around Algebra I and math.
That's one, well, that's, that's, I feel like they're kind of different. I feel like that's different than the other. I think there's one kind of a CTE component and then there's this college and career. So I'm saying that, I would love for you to look into that. And then I would also love for you to look at maybe scheduling options that would enable the exposure and the opportunity, but maybe in a block of time instead of.
Every day.
Instead of every day.
Ms. Arnold, we can do that. We can evaluate those options and.
That's his cue to go sit down and be quiet. I got it, thank you.
We can do those things. And we'll report back in June.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
That's all we're asking. I know it's hard, but we can work this out.
Okay, next we have guest comments. Thank you for attending the board meeting. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following following rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. If you're representing a group, you're limited to five. You can step forward, state your name and address, whether or not you're representing a group, and then the group that you are representing. And just as a reminder, we set this each time, but public criticism of individual staff members or individual board members is prohibited. No individual board member may act on their own behalf. Concerns about the board's actions should be directed to the board as a whole. And so I've been given a list of names, so we'll go through it. The first one I have on my list is TJ Metcalf, but I don't see TJ.
He's not here.
So I have Trista Wheatley. Trista here?
She's not here either.
This list kind of has a lot of people that I think aren't here, so you'll just tell me Jessica Hoag. There she is.
Speaking for a group.
Okay.
Speaking for NC Forward. Wow, I have to go off script a little bit. You all voted to move these middle schoolers to OKH starting in August, and you, you said, here, do it. They did it and they did it well, and you're still criticizing? It's embarrassing, like, just, I, I can't. Okay, back to my, what I'm going to say. Good evening. Many of you know me as, I have been very outspoken time and time again about the unethical actions the majority of this board continues to take. Here we are, May of 2024, and nothing has changed. And while I'm tired of having to continue to call out these actions, I'm not going to stop. That's how we ended up in this mess, due to people like myself not speaking out against lies and misinformation. So we're going to talk about it. The rash in uneducated decisions fueled by personal vendettas and political agendas have all proven that the majority of this board does not have the best interest of our children in mind. Think back to 2022 and what was said and promised, and then what's occurred since January of 2023. They said taxes would go up if community campus passed. Yeah, that wasn't true, but I can see where it could be easily believable if you were the only, if you were only getting your information from one source. They said a main priority for them was fiscal responsibility. Yeah, that wasn't true either, but we'll talk about that later. They also said that they would support our teachers. And wouldn't you know, teachers' voices and concerns about the actions of these board members continue to be ignored. No, there is absolutely no truth to any of those promises, and instead of doing their due diligence and listening to all community members, they sought out to push their own agendas. This consisted of pushing a one-high-school model despite not being popular amongst the community or the teachers and principals that they stated they would support. They acted so unethical that a well-respected attorney with years of school board experience resigned. And then, here's the best part, they hired a separate attorney without any public discussion and used your tax money to pay for this attorney to fire our superintendent, or, I'm sorry, specific duties as assigned by the board. Since January, that lawyer has banked a total of 30 grand, and that's not the end of the bills to come. So this board wasted 30 grand and counting on a separate attorney to do a job that KDE deemed incompetent. And yet, some were truly shocked that a group of attorneys and the commissioner didn't find three-year-old test data, signed affidavits from former disgruntled employees, and videos of staff expressing their First Amendment right. of staff expressing their First Amendment right cause to fire a superintendent. Now, you can say I'm biased, but I would hope that any good and decent attorney could look at that packet of stuff and see it for what it is, a narrative, and obviously not a competent one. If there was any good that came out of any of this, it was that the board did exactly what many of the community were pleading to happen. They got KDE's attention. And if you think that, um, KDE spoke and that we're all in the clear because they're conducting this audit, uh, no, thank you again. We're not in the clear with these people making decisions that impact our children, far from it, actually. Do not be surprised if in a few months we get notified of another special called meeting, um, so that they can vote to terminate the superintendent again, or attempt to. Um, I guess one embarrassing response from KDE calling out the dysfunction of the board wasn't enough. So, let's waste more taxpayers' dollars fiscal responsibility, right? There was a guest comment last meeting that asked, again, for an explanation on why students couldn't choose between attending middle school at OKH or at Thomas Nelson. And I'm sure Mr. Parrish never received an answer from any of our board members. And because board members continue to ignore questions and stay silent, all we can do is interpret based on their actions. So, Mr. Parrish, just know that the reason they can't allow parents to make the choice is because then all the Cox's Creek parents will want their middle schoolers to go to Thomas Nelson, which would just continue to bleed out the enrollment of Bloomfield Middle School. And by all means, if I'm wrong in my interpretation of your actions and lack of transparency, please use some of the time tonight to correct me in my interpretations. It would be greatly appreciated. Actions speak louder than words. Pay attention to who is running in November and what they're saying, their actions, and who's supporting those candidates and their actions. That will tell you who is running to do what this job actually is, to make decisions that benefits all students in this county. It's time we get back to that focus and stop with this, as KDE termed it, dysfunction.
Next on my list, Rebecca McGuire-Dah. Haven't seen her. Okay. Deborah Boachewski. I don't see her. Nicole Milber?
Why am I on there?
I don't know. Maybe it's another Nicole Milber. Jeanie Smith? Bill Osborne?
I don't know. I, I didn't sign up.
Like, and I don't, I, I, this is given to me, so I don't come up with a list. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll just scratch it. Laura Barnett. Don Thrasher. All right, we have Jessica Hoag again, but Jessica's already gone. And we have Damon Jackie. And, okay. All right. All done. Okay. All right. Um, I, we have an executive session pursuant to this KRS. Um, do I have a motion to enter into executive session for KRS 61-810 and 61-810-1F to discuss pending or proposed litigation and student discipline?
Motion.
Okay. Ms. Berry, you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Milber. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right. We'll be back.
We need anything?
We'll take it.
Including our executive session, um, do I have a motion to reconvene the regular session of the Nels County Board of Education?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Ms. Milber, you have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Norman, all in favor of reconvening?
Aye.
And none opposed? Okay. Now, do I have a motion to uphold the discussed expulsion recommendations made by the Expulsion Committee?
Motion.
Okay. All right. Second, Ms. Bowling. Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We have the monthly consent agenda. Superintendent Riley, is there anything you want to go over there?
No, we have a vehicle surplus. I believe that is a wrecked bus. And then, uh, we're looking to purchase a vehicle as a part of efficiencies and also, um, as we potentially work to expand to, from one school resource officers to two in the year ahead.
Okay. And I think everybody else, you have seen the slides. So, do we need a motion there to accept a monthly consent agenda?
Um, is there any way we could look more into the vehicle purchase request? Um, they, that seemed pretty extensive.
You said, you say expensive?
Extensive, as in like, I don't understand why we would need to, like, buy a brand-new vehicle when we have so many other vehicles throughout.
Yeah, so, um, we do invest in vehicles, uh, uh, when our mechanics feel that there's a, a time to do that. You know, I think as a whole, our transportation department is probably as conservative, uh, as anyone, mostly because Jeff Marcasi, our transportation director, uh, and Devin and the team, the mechanics do the maintenance on our vehicles. Um, so, when we get to the point where we, where they make a recommendation really to purchase a new vehicle, it's largely because they've run out of, um, hope in a given vehicle. Uh, and they've determined that the maintenance, and so Jeff Marcasi, not only is our transportation director, he's a, he's a, he's a mechanic, and he's, he's one of the best. So, I, when he makes this recommendation, the, it comes from an assumption that it costs more to maintain, uh, and spend time on other vehicles. And we're at a place where we would potentially be purchasing a new one. In this case, they're also looking for fuel efficiency. So, we transport students, um, in a variety of ways. I sent you guys a message around this particular incident, uh, and they were looking for something that did have greater fuel efficiency that does save fuel costs. Um, that was also a part of this. But in terms of evaluating a used vehicle, we could certainly do that. I think, um, in the same way, uh, our, uh, transportation team doesn't take these things lightly. Um, and, uh, at the same time, we can, you know, choose to come back in July, in June, and evaluate other used vehicle prices. It's all up to the board.
Good deal.
I can add that, the Henry, that's our specific system, we use the transport for our school with a class student, that's transport all in town, town mobile every day. That type of vehicle has a three-year, you know, we do the mechanics ourselves, it has three year, basic roadside, towing, even, so it's all, pretty easy to drive, so, tow, be rental, whatever they think. So, that type of vehicle probably gets 40,000 miles a year transported. So, it's not something that, it isn't, or you, practice mileage.
Devin's response was much smarter than that.
Is it new or leased, or whatever? Is it new?
That would be a straight up, that's a new vehicle, like, pretty quick. That's why we recommended the, uh, Henry over the Malibu, reliability and fuel efficiency. So, in a two-year period, the difference in the price, Henry's on more than a thousand miles, so, the Malibu.
Well, speaking to some, from someone who drives a Volvo every day, and when I go to purchase a vehicle, I'm the same way. I'm going to buy something new because I'm going to know that I'm the one putting all the miles on it, and it happens quick. So, to buy something even with 50,000 miles on already, that's two years of my time already. So, um, I am, and I know you guys are very frugal when you're looking at the cost.
I think Devin did a fantastic job of explaining it more rationally than I did. Thank you.
Thank you very much, by the way.
Yeah. So, it really is just, I mean, after listening to him, I guess further questions and, uh, around that purchase does seem to make, uh, practical sense in that.
I'm good. I'm comfortable with it. Yeah, me too. Okay, so do we need a, a motion to accept the monthly consent agenda?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. Okay. Ms. Bowling, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? None opposed? All right, motion passes. Okay, so with the personnel notifications, we're just acknowledging receipt of personnel notifications, no action is required on this matter. Okay, and then Jessica Sheehorn.
So more big news, as we look at the work of our federal and state grant programs, and we have another big win in the Nelson County Schools, adding to the grants that Ms. Sheehorn will be sharing tonight.
Good evening, it's my privilege to announce that we have been awarded three different grants since the last time that presented to you, and I'm just coming before you tonight to see if you would like to accept those grants.
We do need to, now it's those grants, so.
We got them, honey.
I had them linked on there, okay. I'll go through them for you. All right, the first one is from the National Education Association Leading and Learning Leadership Grant for $2,345 to support sending one of our library media specialists to tech training to integrate that into her work with students.
Okay.
All right, the second one is our preschool partnership grant in the amount of $300,000 to support the work of our preschool in providing high-quality early childhood services for three- and four-year-olds across the district. And then our last one is a United Way Grant to fund some of our frisk work in the amount of $3,000 to support student clothing needs.
That's pretty exciting.
I'll make a motion. So that goes generally to frisky.
Our frisk centers will, they'll control that money and use it as students need, yes.
Well, we need it. I wish it was more than $3,000.
So I just want to celebrate the $300,000, we've received significant grant monies for preschool and early learning. I guess it's another example, too, for the community, for those people out there that talk about administrative costs. The Nelson County Schools, in my time, from 2011 to 2018, didn't have a community center grants coordinator. And we did in 2019, the board made a decision to create a full-time position that was focused on high-level grant access. As a byproduct of that work, we've received upwards of $22 million. And this particular grant, if you think about Ms. Sheehorn and her work, this particular grant alone, which we've generated much more than this grant, covers the cost of that particular salary in that person, not that it's paying for her salary. My point is, you have to invest in smart people to get rewarded for that work. Between Karen Lee and Jessica Sheehorn, our community has benefited upwards of $22.5 million over four and a half years, so it's smart money. Thank you.
Good, I always look forward to your presentations, month after month. Well, is there a motion to approve the grant awards as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Motion passes. Okay. Okay, Mr. Mattingly?
Good evening, thank you all. Last month, we asked you all to let us put out for bids for our custodial cleaning. We had four companies reach back out to us with bids.
Good deal.
And established the desired criteria that we wanted for custodial services. And tonight, we took the requested bids, we reviewed those, and the data up here shows our recommendation night will be for Tandem Solutions. They are a little more than what we have now, but they give us a local company that we deal with and not somebody outside the state that we have struggled with.
It also provides annual cost protections that we didn't have in other cases as well. So the reference here, the bid was $1.61 million from SSC, $1.659 million from Tandem Solutions, $1.882 from Citywide, and $2.289 from Alpha and Omega Building Services. Kevin also interviewed with these people a little more in-depth, but there's also in the contracts some year-one increased conversations that you can see in each case. I think the overall cost there, I think it's $30,000, $40,000 difference, it looks like, but in year-one, the variability in these contracts, there was concerns about that. Ultimately, Kevin and the team do the interview process, make a recommendation to us, and we can really kind of explore that further if we need to.
Someone just brought to my attention, do you have any concern, I think, is Tandem kind of a newer startup business? I know there's experience there.
He's got 20 years' experience, but he is a new startup company.
Yes.
And, you know.
Do you have any hesitation about that, or?
I don't.
You know him.
Well, we've worked with him in the past, and he's giving us what we ask for.
Okay, good. So we won't have the same issue that we've had previously where they didn't do what they were contracted. They didn't do, yeah.
And just to be clear, I know some of the individuals you work with, and I know some of the people that are working at high school are doing great work and working really hard. What were some of your issues, though, with SSC?
Well, continued decline in the cleaning. My facility team and maintenance team have been covering schools lately. We're cleaning four or five classrooms each morning at some schools, not all, but at some schools. So that decline was a big factor for me. I didn't want to go back to where we were during COVID when we first started, you know, we kind of gave them that, so.
You're the one that has to deal with them and correct them if they are slacking, so, and I might follow your recommendation and go with that because there's not much difference here. And if it's someone you can work with, I know it's a lot better.
Yeah, well, biggest thing for me is I've got a local guy that's going to come to my office and I get on a plane, and I got to wait for him.
And that's been our biggest issue with national companies.
And this is a year, one-year contract, is that right?
Yeah.
So we can evaluate.
I was not going to do a five-year contract again.
Good.
And we were, if we both agree, we move on next year, next year, and hopefully, everybody's happy after every year. And that's what we want.
Okay.
Our staff and our students deserve that.
Okay, good.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
So I guess the recommended motion would be to approve Tandem Solutions as Nelson County's custodial service for 24, 25 school years.
I'll make a motion.
Beginning June 1st, is that correct?
Yeah, June 1st.
Okay, effective June the 1st?
June 1st, yes.
Uh, we can add that to the motion, okay. Mr. Norman made the motion, the second was Ms. Berry?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Martin and Ms. Rogers, tentative budget.
We'll start with just a reminder of the budget process, you know, it lasts all year, constant. But we came to you in January with the draft budget, which is really just a rough draft exactly is what it is. It's just, you don't really have any information yet, but you have to put something together and say, we're starting to work on it. And then we go into February, and we start looking at the tentative allocations for the schools, which is a huge part of the budget. And then in March, we start the salary schedule conversation, and in April, you approved that, so we have a better idea of what payroll will be. And as, you know, we're continuing to invest in people, that is our main focus. And now here we are in May with the tentative budget, which we know a whole lot more than we knew in January, but there's still a lot we don't know. We have to wait for property assessments, we have to have our tax conversations. We, we have a good idea of what payroll will be, but we don't know exact until we get all of our contracts, get the new staffing sheet set up. And then when we start the new payroll for the new fiscal year, I start looking at the very first payroll, take that, times 26, and we get a pretty good idea of exactly where it will be payroll-wise. And then, you know, big tax conversations that we have will determine our revenue. And in the meantime, we have plans to go through each budget and look through it, see what we can do. Smart money is our motive at the moment, we want to spend smartly. We want to be physically responsible, and if it's something we need, then we need to get it, but if it's not, we don't. We've been working on this for many years, six years of planning, as you can see, investing in people, operational efficiencies. The UP Foundation has supported us greatly with grants, and that always helps.
This is really just a broad overview to understand certain areas of the budget, the budget document is very big.
Yes.
How many pages is the current, that report that's in there, do you know? Is it 80 some pages?
I can't remember if it's 80, 50, I can't remember.
It's a significant amount of data, so broadly, we've broken it down just to understand key notes that exist in each area. The overall ratio of the budget stayed very similar this year. We thought it was going to shift a little bit, but it didn't, it's 70/30, 70/30, 71/29, somewhere between there, between operations and, let's say, all, you know, instruction and learning that goes into our school system. There's no, there's, obviously, our goal is to reduce operations. This year, there's only no shift because we gave significant salary increases to operations, including transportation, cafe. So we share that as an example, but largely, the additional increases are salary increases.
Absolutely.
And class sizes. So class sizes in Section 4, the lower class sizes did increase some of that, and then the salaries related to that. But most everything else is steady in the approach. I think this is probably the bigger conversation that you guys can kind of talk through and explain out, as well as you think about the work we're doing to phase out of the federal ESER funding, which is, our last year is.
It's right now. All right, we're almost finished. It's almost done, so we have to plan for next year. You know, last year, you can recall, we carried forward a balance, and our contingency was a little higher percentage than we had in the past, but the reason was that we are preparing for the future. We have to be able to sustain, and we have a lot of ESER payroll that will be coming back to the general fund, and we hope to decrease operations. And of course, our raise has increased payroll expenses, but like we've said before, we want to invest in people.
Well, you have to maintain a 2% at least, so.
And, you know, our goal would be 5%.
Well, that's always been my goal to.
That's my goal, is always 5%.
Yeah.
But, yes, so.
I think this budget, though, it represents essentially the same investment that we just made in the salary schedule. It also maintains the investment in teacher leadership pathways, micro credentials, early literacy, and the Amazon backpack that allows every teacher $500. And that also is really just a byproduct of what we've continued to invest in people. That's the primary impact on the budget, nothing else, everything else is relatively steady. Mr. Martin, anything you'd add to that as you think about the analysis?
I mean, really, the key is continuing to think about, obviously, investing in people through the raise process, but also just being operationally efficient, and even being efficient among our personnel and having agility with personnel. I think the staffing conversations that we had back in March with each of our principals, really listening to them, and what does their building need in order to function very well, was very important. Listening to the trends from that space, but also partnering with them to think about agility of personnel and how we can utilize them in multiple situations. I know Ms. Arnold had a big conversation around the connects. One big piece I would encourage you guys to think about is even just the personnel, how do we get that person to this location or that location?
Alex started 13 years ago as a rotating math teacher across the district.
So.
I just forgot, I just realized that, he was teaching math here in New Haven.
We're about to bring full circle here. So just the personnel with the agility of that is obviously a constraint. So my first year teaching with Nelson County Schools, actually, an initiative of the board was to offer upper-level math courses to middle school students. Ms. Hogan, I don't see her in the audience today, but one of our children, he's super bright, he was a sixth grader actually taking Algebra II. Obviously, each middle school wasn't necessarily staffed, they couldn't offer an Algebra II course, they couldn't have one teacher here to offer Algebra II all day per se. So I was a rotating teacher across the district, we had four middle schools at the time, and essentially, I taught five classes, and I started at Bloomfield, taught a class, went to OKH and taught two classes, went to New Haven and taught a class, and went to Boston and taught a class. I didn't have a planning period.
He was just out of the Camry, too.
And I was hauling, I was hauling it to get from place to place, but it was very challenging. Obviously, it was my first year teaching, but also, I was very much on an island in that, I didn't have a lot of support because I didn't have a lot of ownership in being in one building every single day, because frankly, I was everywhere.
So we pulled him up off the ground in year two, and, you know, he.
Now here we are. But I guess to that point, really just agility with staffing, efficiencies is something we continue to think about from a finance standpoint.
I don't know, I like what you said, that you didn't have ownership, and I think that is probably the thing that we hear from our educators, and I know I'm still getting off subject, but the thing that we get, we hear from our educators is the lack of collaboration when they're isolated, when they're on that island. And I appreciate you bringing that to the table.
But then there's a lot of teachers that have to do what he did, too, they're still on, to this day. You just do what you have to do.
I do want to point out, we are supposed to receive our tax assessments in July, but we never do. So we always receive them in August, and at that point in time, we can get real about opportunities for next year. And we do assume that the property values have continued to increase. We do assume that all the people talking about the money coming from the state, across the state, will not be coming to Nelson County. We also assume our tax rate is unlikely to increase under any circumstances in Nelson County, but we don't know that information at this time. So we share that as context to know where we are today really stands as a byproduct of salary schedule decisions and continued commitments around professional learning. Nothing else has really changed.
I do want to add, though, when you approved this budget, you are approving that we are going to allow the schools to carry forward any balance of Section 6 money that they have, so that we feel that if we do that from year to year, or at least at this point, it really promotes responsible spending. It's not a race to the deadline of, oh my gosh, the year's almost over, we've got to spend this money, spend this money. We can make responsible decisions and make smarter purchases that way, but that is part of this budget.
Good, that's amazing, that's good.
Okay, any other questions? Great, do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 tentative budget as presented?
Motion.
Okay, I got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bowling, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you. All right, Ms. Rogers?
This is just an annual compliance thing that we have to do. We have to engage our auditors with the contract and the engagement letter. I'm very happy with our auditors, I hope that you all are, too. They're very informative and they're very educational. Like anytime I have any questions, they are willing to help me answer anything. They are super great to work with, our schools, all of our business leaders, everybody, we've had very good experience with them. And their prices have stayed very, very competitive. It's been about a 3% increase from year to year, this will be our third year with them. And the first year, I really came into this position, and really, we were auditing the previous CFO's work, so that one was a little difficult in a way, but, so really, only one year of my work has been audited.
Yeah.
That's, you know, that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's what they're there for.
Absolutely, oh, they are so, they are so helpful, and they are always willing to, if I have a question, or they ask me a question, and I'm like, what exactly do you want? They always are willing to give me examples and to tell me like, well, this is a better way to do this, or they're super-duper helpful, and very, very knowledgeable.
Yes.
So do we have a motion to approve the audit contract with Patrick and Associates?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Limited Board Counsel, Ms. Bowling wanted to add this to the agenda, because we had talked at the last one about limited Board Counsel, which is Jake Thompson, y'all will recall back in.
January.
January, January, we hired him on a limited basis. And I've spoken with him, and this is, this is my position on that, he is not receiver-retainer, we just pay him for hours that he actually works. We had some legal stuff this week, he didn't participate in that. I think that we're not in a position to need him to do any new, we don't need to assign him any new duties. He is, however, I mean, as long as there's litigation, he is handling some open record requests and open meeting issues. I don't know if he's actively doing that right now, but until the litigation is completed, there's the potential that we'll need him to do that again. So while I don't want to assign him any new duties, and we aren't under any obligation to pay him each month if he doesn't do any work, I think that we still need him there because he has firsthand knowledge. I actually think that's probably a savings to the board as well, because Mr. Crawford, to do the thing that we're asking Mr. Thompson to do would require kind of teaching him, catching him up on that.
I guess my, the biggest concern that I have is because of the. I guess my, the biggest concern that I have is because of the, the nature of what you're saying he is dealing with for the Board, it, there's a bit of a conflict there because there is this uniqueness of how this litigation is going forward, where there's separation of the Board in this litigation. And part of him having access and knowing a little bit of the details without going too public with it is, to me, it's a conflict. So I don't really see the need to keep Mr. Thompson in this position when, right now, like I said last month, we currently have four different law firms representing us with Mr. Thompson being one of those four. Now, two of those, I believe, are being covered by the insurance that the Board pays for, which is probably going to create an increase in that somehow. But the other two, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Crawford, the Board is paying that out currently. And I understand if we're not using Mr. Thompson, that he's not getting paid. But at the same time, I think there's a conflict when it comes to what that litigation looks like with the makeup of the, the litigation in itself. So I think it's something that we really need to consider and maybe talk to all four of the attorneys, or the firms that are dealing with us currently and sort of see where Mr. Thompson fits into that and kind of make a bigger decision maybe in the months ahead.
Sure. And I mean, I think we can, and I've had a conversation with Mr. Thompson. I don't think he just needs to be a warm body in a room. I mean, if he's not serving a purpose, if it's something Mr. Crawford can handle, again, it would be limited only to, to the extent he's responding to open record requests and open meeting issues that dealt with the very limited representation that he was providing. I mean, he can provide that as firsthand and a lot more efficiently. Mr. Crawford would have to get the information from him. That, so that's where I am. I, I don't believe that we need to give him any new duties. So, I mean, unless we have a motion to.
It's, I'm not a voting.
He knows things that he wouldn't have to, he would have to update the present one.
Yeah.
And that could take some time.
But that, that, again, that goes back to the conflict that I'm talking about. So, again, without getting into the weeds, there is a uniqueness to the litigation that separates the Board members in this litigation. Does Mr. Thompson work for one side or the other? We have Mr. Crawford, who is working for the entire Board.
Yes.
And then we have other representation.
I'm not sure who Mr. Thompson works for.
That's my question.
Let me be clear, as a matter of record, as a matter of record, I have serious concerns of Mr. Thompson's engagement in anything to do with any of the legal activities that we're engaged in, especially considering the reality that in March, he submitted an eight ninety-two page document terminating my contract for six charges. With that considered, I just want to state as a matter of record, I don't know who he works for. I don't know what he does, other than that document or that purpose. So unless the intention is to continue to pursue my, you know, separation of terms, he needs to be terminated. But that's just my opinion as a superintendent. I don't vote on that matter.
We're dealing, to be clear, we're dealing with litigation for things that have already occurred. I mean, we're, we're not dealing with any new issues. We've not given him any new work. He's responding to requests with regard to things that happened in the spring. So, you know, unless there's a motion and a second for us to terminate any kind of engagement with him, it's my position that we do make every effort to not double up on legal services. But I think we're just going to be paying somebody else to catch up, to do things he can do more efficiently.
I am fine having a bigger conversation, like I said, with the attorneys that we currently are utilizing, Mr. Crawford and Mr. Owlesley, Mark Finzel, you know, those groups. I am fine having a conversation that says, where does Mr. Thompson fit into this, and truly narrow down who Mr. Thompson works for. Because I am very much like Mr. Superintendent Bradley. I don't feel like Mr. Thompson has represented me as a member of this Board. And so I have serious concerns with his ability to really look at all of us in the representation that he is supposed to be here for. He was hired as limited counsel for the entire Board, not limited members of the Board.
That's right.
Okay.
And I would express and reiterate that concern. I'm not a voting member on this matter, but it, it appears to me that any engagement he would have in the current litigation that relates in any way, shape, or form to previous matters related to my contract would be a conflict of interest. I state that publicly, I'll state that privately. So that's.
Okay. Well, I don't think we have a motion, so, but, you know, and we can revisit it, I think, for, in the future.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on to.
Two of our favorite people.
All right. Academic growth and update.
Are they wrong yet?
Thirty.
So Courtney and I really get to celebrate. So we're excited about celebrating the work that's occurred throughout the school year in our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high schools. So we're just going to briefly go through that growth and what that looks like. Some of the work that's been happening recently is our schools are taking part in the Kentucky State Summit of Assessment. So that started last week and this week. So we're going strong and finishing that. So this work just kind of sums all of that up and what we're going through in our schools daily. So you'll see here, this is the elementary. The reading three through five is first. We'll get through the K through two in just a moment. Really, you'll see some big growth numbers here, but I just want to say that is, as we teach the Kentucky State Standards through our classrooms, this is from quarter one to quarter four. So really, how we've taught those assessments and the mastery of those assessments, that's where you get that plus thirty-seven percent. That's just mastery of the Kentucky State Standards through that work. You'll see each mastery rate, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, they're around the same, around sixty percent mastery as we teach those standards. And then down towards the bottom, that's our I Ready diagnostic that we take three times a year, and that shows you, they have a new projected proficiency report. So that basically is just them projecting what they think students will score on the KSA assessment. That's not solid for sure numbers. That's just a projected number. You'll see our third grade had some high projections there with a sixteen, sixteen percent increase from KSA last year, our fourth grade a nine percent increase, and our fifth grade a eight percent increase. Overall, from Diagnostic One to Diagnostic Three, that's a forty percent increase in our third through fifth in standard mastery on their grade level assessments. And then with the national range, you'll see there are third, fourth, and fifth grade. Students also showed high growth compared to national norms on that, on that spring assessment. So that's exciting. For math, that is, and then overall, that's plus twelve. That's just overall, third through fifth grade, we're projected to have a twelve percent increase on reading in third through fifth grade on the KSA that they're taking right now. So that's exciting. Math, K through five, kind of the same information there. You'll see a forty-four percent growth. With that's our common assessments, our assessments, our teachers give, our standard based assessments here that we do in-house. And then KSA versus I Ready, again, that's that projected proficiency. You'll see eleven, six, and five percent growth, and then a forty percent. Exciting with math, our kindergarten had high growth and high performance in national norms. So they, they show you that in kind of a quadrant, and you fall in that quadrant based on if you have high growth, low growth, high proficiency, low proficiency. So our kindergarten fell in high growth and high performance nationally. So that's exciting. And our first and second grade fell in high growth. So they're not the high performance yet, but that, that's that growth piece that we're, we're thinking about. And then an eight percent average projected growth from KSA last year in math, K through, and that's third through fifth grade.
That's awesome.
Good deal.
So that's exciting. And kudos to our teachers. They do this work every day. They're in there doing this work, working with the kids, seeing who's getting it, who's not getting it, working in small groups, intervention, all those things are happening daily. So this is a shout out really to our teachers and the work that they're doing every day in the classroom.
Of course.
And then I just wanted to take apart kind of early literacy K through two, because that's a big topic for us. It's a big topic across the state, and that's something that we've really, really put a big, with big emphasis on this year. So you'll see that we use UFLI and Haggerty, you might hear those words. Those are just curriculums we use that teachers can use as a resource to teach the standards. That's, that doesn't mean that we solely like teach straight to UFLI, but it's basically just a resource they use to help them teach the standards. You can see that there's some big growth there, that plus thirty-eight. Those are just early literacy skills. When we think about early literacy skills, that's phonemic awareness, that's phonics, that's high frequency words. This is not really thinking about comprehension in this part. This is just those skills. So you can see from the beginning of the year, had some high growth across the Board there. And then grade level, just on level, that we went from eighteen percent to seventy-three percent across K through two from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And then K through two, again, our kindergarten and first grade in literacy had high growth and high performance. So kindergarten across the Board had some really good data come out in the spring. And then first grade for reading, high growth, high performance. And again, that's national norms. That's not ESER state. That's national norms compared to all the people who take I Ready. And then second grade had high growth. And then you can see our community assessment mastery, that's just what our teachers are keeping up with as they teach those standards and they assess them weekly. That's them showing the mastery on those standards. So that's exciting. And again, teachers, kudos to them, they're working each week, design labs, sinking through that work. So I'm just excited to celebrate that. I'm going to end mine with a video. You guys may have seen this come out from Mr. Bradley's All In for Kids segment on early literacy.
In the Nelson County Schools, we know literacy skills are foundational in how we grow and shape our earliest learners. Because of this, our K two teachers have adopted a phonics program called UFLI Foundations. Learn more in this episode of the All In for Kids series.
P E X.
P E X.
C H says. C K says. And W H says.
Foster Heights and the Nelson County Schools has shifted its approach to make years of research in the science of reading. Our teachers follow an explicit and systematic approach of teaching students the rules and patterns of written words and work with students closely on encoding and decoding practices through multisensory methods. We want our students to grow through reading and writing and feel confident and successful in literacy. Our teachers work incredibly hard and are finding great success through early literacy instruction.
Our students have grown so much this year, especially in reading and writing. They've been working so hard, learning all these new skills, and they're able to apply them so well.
My kids love how UFLI incorporates movement, so we can get up and create movements together, and that really excites them. We also are able to incorporate games within our lessons. They actually love like the structure of it. They know our routines.
I think the most engaging is when you get the kids up, you get them moving, you get them playing games, singing songs, chanting back, helps them learn even better. They know UFLI time, like it's UFLI time.
Here in NC Schools, we are working to unlock the world of knowledge and opportunity for every learner. By prioritizing ongoing professional development, implementing top notch instructional materials, and insurance support for all students, we cultivate a learning environment where every individual can thrive and contribute meaningfully to their community. Making early literacy a top priority is just one way we're all in for kids.
So again, I would just like to celebrate that work with our K through two and our three through five teachers across the district. So, thank you.
I know. I, I've got one thing. Can we get sent those scores, school by school? I mean, grade by grade, school by school?
Um, yeah, we can look into that. I can give Mr. Bradley and Steve.
Yes, please.
We can release there and, and just look through that.
Yeah. I'm, I'm interested to know.
Are they on the dashboards? Aren't they on the dashboards?
They should be on their data dashboards on the school.
They should. Okay.
And I'll make sure, and I'll get that sent.
Okay, thank you.
So really, our celebration continues with middle school. Middle school has the community assessments. They've got P S A T eight-nine, and they have the I Ready. They recently just did the KSA. Of course, we won't have KSA results back until the fall. But we have lots of growth across the Board with community assessments, lots of growth in every content area, writing across the Board as well, lots of I Ready growth. We have similar I Ready growth to grades three, five, as that we saw in middle school. We also were in the high growth quadrant on I Ready within that platform as well. So I wanted to focus specifically on, this is a little chart. You can see the light green is where we fell within KSA last year. Hope mentioned that there was a, a proficiency projector within I Ready now. And so the dark green is where I Ready was projecting us to be the second week of April. We're hoping to be higher than that because our teachers took that data. They really tore it apart, identified students, skills, needs, did some tier two responses and extensions with students those last four weeks before that test. So we predict that's going to be even higher than what you see here, but still, you see lots of growth across the Board within reading and math at the middle school level. That growth continues on into P S A T eight-nine. We started this test last year with a part of our Advanced Kentucky Agreement, that grant agreement. We have that with math and ELA. We had ten percent growth within our reading and writing benchmark this year, so fifty-eight percent of our students on average met that reading and writing benchmark, which is great growth to see. We continue to see lots of growth around reading within our middle school students. Twenty percent met the math benchmark in our middle schools, and we're still six percent higher than the state average within that reading and writing benchmark within P S A T eight-nine. And this year, since our second year, our students got to earn real money because of the P S A T eight-nine. Our eighth grade students got to earn checks for a meeting benchmark or their growth goals. So our eighth grade students earned checks for that. So some of them might have earned fifty dollar checks or hundred dollar checks for their achievement on the P S A T eight-nine. So two hundred and seventy-one checks were issued to our students in Nelson County Schools from Advanced Kentucky, and that totaled thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for our students.
That's great.
That's awesome. Our students were really excited about those celebrations and really invested in that process.
And the big check.
It's money.
And the big check, yes. One of the parents actually on OKH's SBDM donated that check for them to use for those celebrations. So that's another good example of community helping us celebrate our students for their academic achievement there. So that growth kind of continues on into high school. We continue to see growth in our community assessments in high school as well. High school doesn't take I Ready, they take ACT, N I A. So they took the ACT in March. We did see growth on the ACT as well. With ACT, a little bit of growth on composite is a lot. If you have, I know you all have had high school students, a little bit is a lot on the ACT. So you can see some comparison there with the state and also Nelson County Schools. We're really just kind of neck and neck with the state, and that's our estimation of what the state average is going to be according to the ACT data portal. We are suspecting that could change a little bit, maybe lower. State average might be a little bit lower because some of the larger districts accommodated testing still is not in yet. So we could be even higher, closer to that state average, which is good. Also, looking at the growth trends, you can see state went down in most, all, all areas. We went up in most areas. So that's really great to see, especially we see that really high growth in math, because we know that's an area we've been focused on, so we're excited about that.
Unfortunately, across the country in the last five years, ACT scores have gone down, even in advance of the pandemic, mostly because colleges and universities aren't focused on it in the same way they were ten years ago. In the same way, states aren't focused on it in the same way they were ten years ago. So the trends are a little bit unique there. What's rewarded usually is what gets done. The ACT no longer rewards students in the same way. As an example, in Nelson County, as a community, twenty percent of our county, based on our state database, have a four-year degree. Of that, twenty percent of people, let's say in Nelson County, that's five thousand people hypothetically, of that five thousand people, you're looking at a very small percentage of students in that five thousand that got scholarships. And the ACT has become less and less relevant. It is mandated in Kentucky, unlike other states. So every kid in Kentucky takes the test. Many states, that's not the case. So you're also comparing national, it's not, this, you know, you're comparing it to college-going students and non-college-going students. I share this because it's, it's relevant, and I think the ACT is probably going to get phased out over the next five years as a mandated assessment for all students, because eighty percent of students are not choosing to go to a four-year university that would require. The data is still relevant and useful, and it does have a, a shown awareness of rigor and the type of instruction or skills that students have. But I do want everyone to understand contextually, the ACT ten to fifteen years ago was the thing. In fact, when I came to Kentucky, I was like, ACT is the thing. It was the thing. The high schools were very focused on it. Today, it's not in the same way a focus of high schools as it was, once was, because I think we're understanding that while Alex Martin may be, may be going to a four-year university, Jim Cottrell over here was just, you know, transitioning into a new construction role opportunity. And not that those skills didn't matter to him. The point is, his relevant, the relevance of the assessment was different. As we look to the future, we do believe there's going to be multifaceted assessments that students are going to be taking. The ACT is probably going to evolve quite a bit. I like to share that because it's all about context. You can see, you can see in these numbers, while we outperform the state in growth, it's still, we still have a lot of growth to do.
The ACT used to serve as like a gatekeeper to a lot of college courses and admissions, and now we're seeing that colleges are waiting it with GPA or other factors and/or our students that already have access to English one-on-one, English one-on-two, math one-fifty. So they're already getting access to that way before they take the ACT. So it, some students are just. access to that way before they take the ACT, so it's, some students are just like, well, maybe I'll take it once and maybe not four times, like maybe students 10 years ago might have had to do.
And that's only the last piece.
You still have to have it to get a scholarship.
That's right. Well, 2830 is about what you.
And we need to help, yes, we need to help those that want to go to college or apply for scholarships. That's my point, that's been my point for four years.
Absolutely, and that's why our English Multiple Choice assessments are, a lot of ACT results are a released question, so we do emphasize that, absolutely.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And I think we also wanted to celebrate some of our post-secondary readiness.
Ms. Arnold, she crossed her limits, and I apparently, for speaking, so she's sitting down. Oh, boy, she knows better, everybody knows that's, that's a joke. So the, 96% of our students are currently post-secondary ready, including a variety of experiences, whether that's college-ready, career-ready, and/or have gained that access through professions-based experiences. As you know, last year, our district was number one in the state of Kentucky overall for those types of indicators. We've been pioneering programs and practices that weren't getting rewarded three, four years ago that are getting rewarded today. Again, it's another example, if we were doing the right thing for students, because we knew it was the right thing. Now, the state's honoring that work, and both of our schools were very high in post-secondary readiness by state measurement. We know it's multifaceted approach, this is also an example of industry certifications that have been received, the percentage of students in those areas that have received industry certifications at this time, and this will be celebrated throughout the week at our Level Up Events occurring at our Area Technology Center. In the end, we continue to refine our strategy, All In for Kids, if we move into next year, you hear about some of that each meeting. As we move to next meeting in June, our next strategic planning will turn into All In for Kids Strategic Planning, just as a shift in the way we're looking at the priorities, so. Awesome work to the team all across the district, and know that in, in reality, all the people that we need to celebrate and shout out aren't in the room right now, but for those that are watching, or those that are, are connected to people, you know, celebrating those that are making this work happen across our school system this week and next week as a part of Ring of the Year celebrations is very important. Thank you, Hope and Miss.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, facility plan, next steps, Mr. Martin and Mr. Codell.
So following the sale of, accepting the bids and sale of bonds on the Up Center and Bus Garage, we wanted to provide a timeline, projected timeline, as well as conversations around New Haven, as it has also accelerated in our conversations and priorities. So, have at it, guys.
So really what we have referenced here, just kind of some major milestones and upcoming events, obviously we've highlighted the groundbreaking ceremonies for the Up Center and Bus Garage. Also, Mr. Codell's going to talk about the construction contract process, that'll be something we speak to you guys about in June. And then really, teams, construction teams really see lots of work occurring towards the end of June of this year, and Mr. Codell speaks some about that, along with really the next steps for New Haven projects, so I'll pass it over to Jim.
Okay, since your last meeting, we've been in the process of preparing all the construction contracts, bonds, purchasers, et cetera, they've all been prepared, sent to the contractors, a lot of, most of them have been returned to us. We expect to have all of them by the end of the week and to, to the board office by first of next week. Also, so that process is moving, you'll be ready to approve the groundbreakings this week. You know, you've got Fri-, this Friday, and then again, for the Up Center, and then, what's the date on the?
29th.
29th on the Bus Garage for your groundbreakings. Let's see here, we're working on background checks on all the contractors, working on, they'll be working on the Up Center, that'll be checked very closely, coordinated with, with school. We are, we're also working with Ms. Arnold on phasing plans, getting those, getting all that finalized. Let's see here, logistics being worked on as well, and we're also, anything on the Up Center or, or Bus Garage.
I want, in my mind, it's hard for me to determine just to think, how far away is the Bus Garage going to be from where it originally is right now?
Well, it's going to be right there in the same.
Well, in accordance to Okentucky Home, where is it going to be in accordance to Okentucky Home, beside it, behind it?
Directly behind the current Academy building.
Okay, that's where I'm talking about, because somebody asked me and I couldn't exactly tell them, because I had heard it was going to be, by the drawings, it looked like it was going to be behind Okentucky Home.
It may not be in that vicinity, but essentially directly behind the current Academy.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to know.
We're also working through design issues, or some utility items at New Haven, that's, that's progressing well.
Good.
I don't have Jeff's exact schedule with me, but he, he's getting pretty close.
Yeah, so 75% is June 11th, is presenting to the board on June 11th, I don't know if Wes Davis is going to be there to talk about.
Yeah, he'll be here, and we'll, we are currently in the process of rerunning numbers on that one, so we don't have quite the shock that we had on these.
So board members have expressed some, some interest in potentially evaluating capacity needs, certain board members have, have asked for that. Whether that occurs or not, well, we can determine after June 11th. And that would look like, when the students get there in August, it would be an easier study of the architect to determine that. We project a 210 students?
When you count preschool, about 210.
210, preschool out, it's about 185.
Without preschool, you're looking at around 185, yeah.
Yeah, so just some context, 185 students, K-5, 20 to 25 preschool students. Jeff is hard at work, but he's also paying attention to just the realities of that and evaluating costs. So Jeff's in a Monday morning meeting with the team every Monday, and they spent five or six weeks navigating the pipe, now they've determined a solution to the pipe, it's not free, but it is a solution, and it will allow us to move forward with some of the consultants.
Sounds good.
Thank you all.
This is a recommendation to move the June 11th meeting to the ATC so we can look closer at the Up Center. As, it'll be kind of the last moment we get with that building, for those of you that want to have a moment with it, it'll give you that.
That works for me.
You know.
We can have a moment. I'll have a moment.
So, that's, the motion would be to move the June 11th, 2024 meeting to the Nelson County ATC, also known as the Up Center.
Okay, do I have a motion to move that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Give me a pose, motion passes.
This was, this was on the, it was on there from previous times.
Yeah, I appreciate the board celebrations being on there, I think this is the perfect time of year to have all kinds of celebrations, we heard about all the growth that's occurring, I never doubted that, by the way, you guys, okay, cool. But also, we have seniors that are going to be celebrated over the next week, we have middle school students that are going to be transitioning to high school, there are so many different things that we can be celebrating and be grateful for. I'm looking forward to celebrating our retirees and all the Pride Award winners this week. I just want to thank everyone for all of the hard work you've done, I want to thank Superintendent Ms. Arnold and everyone that's worked on this transition for Boston and New Haven kids, the event that was held at OKH a few weeks ago to welcome those families in, I just, I heard a great deal of positive feedback in how the families felt welcomed and engaged, and they, the kids were excited to see all of the experiences that they were going to have in that space, and I am so grateful that you guys put that together and took care of the families the way you did. And I feel like there's going to be a really good transition in this, and the families are coming in in a very positive way, and I'm grateful for what you guys are doing.
Those are all really good things. Specifically being here at Bloomfield, I hate that Tucker Binack left, but his sister, Anissa Binack, got a really big scholarship through VADA, like a national scholarship, there were thousands of applicants. And being here in Bloomfield in this, in this, in this room makes me think of her, and you know, her journey really started here with some really great leaders and teachers, and so just celebrating her and all the students, there's so many that have done really great things, but I think that's worth celebrating, so.
I want to congratulate people, the kids that have earned scholarships through UK from Ms. Ball, which is Mr. Snyder's, John Snyder's sister. She donated, she gave a million dollars to UK, so we've got kids that have earned those scholarships, as little as $7,000, because I talked to Mr. Snyder last week, and he said the smallest, the smallest scholarship went to was 7,000 or 8,000. So I congratulate those people, those kids, the parents, the hard work it went into, those kids earning a scholarship, because it was not going to be easy with her, because Ms. Ball was a firm believer in, in education, so I celebrate those.
So, yeah, so the Ball family, she's a Snyder from Bloomfield originally, and.
She's the Ball home people, that's who she is.
I believe she donated, correct, I could be wrong.
She started it, she and her husband started.
Ten, 10 million dollars to Henderson and Nelson over the course of, I mean, the foreseeable future, so.
Wonderful family, wonderful family, yes.
Well, I'm glad the air conditioner works, I'm just thinking.
It does work.
Nice and cool in here. Well, if I don't have anything else, then do I have a motion to adjourn the regular session of Nelson County Board of Education?
Motion.
All right, Mr. Foreman, he's hard to beat on that motion, very, got a second from Ms. Milver, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is adjourned.